All right. Good evening. I'll call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. Just a reminder to the committee and our audience that this meeting is being recorded. We'll go ahead and do the roll call. David?
Here.
Jess?
Here.
You're?
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom? I thought I saw Lisa.
Here.
No, thank you. Lisa Martin?
Here.
Randy?
Here.
Tom? Don't think I saw, and I am here. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, March 14th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. First order of business is the consent agenda. We have minutes from February 8th, as well as accounts payable warrants, payable warrants, and two donations from the Special Olympics.
So moved?
Second.
All right, all those in... Oh, now I have to do a roll call, don't I? So first meeting. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Abstain.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is six yeses, one abstention. All right, so we did not have anybody submit for public comments. So we'll move on to reports. I don't have anything. I don't see Rebecca on. So we'll go to Superintendent Morgan.
I also don't have anything until we go into executive session.
All right, moving on to old business, FY '25 budget. Who has this item?
So again, just wanted to check in with the school committee after the hearing at our last meeting, just to find out. We do have a finance committee meeting coming up on Thursday, but did want to hear from the committee what the committee's thoughts are on moving forward with what appears to be an override of $3.3 million at this point. We still do not have an answer regarding... I shouldn't say we don't have an answer. We don't have a decision on what direction to take for health insurance at this point. I heard this evening that there's basically access or our ability to get into the GIC effective September 1st, which is much, much earlier than we had anticipated. Initially, we were told no outright, and then we were told potentially January 1st. Now there's a very strong possibility that we can get in on September 1st. The problem with that is that we would have to scramble for two months of not having coverage. So we are working with a consultant. The consultant is reaching out to find out if our current carriers would allow us to extend for two months. Those carriers are through Nishoba Minuteman, but they'd have to do so separate from that. And if they're unable to do that, it does put us in a very difficult position of trying to find health insurance for a two-month time period. I also heard this evening that there may be opportunity for us to get into Maya as well for next school year. So I've been in communication with the director of HR, who's working with our consultant, and we are trying to find which path makes the most sense for our, not only our employees, but also with FY '25. But again, the GIC piece comes with that problem of not potentially having coverage for two months, which means we would literally have to scramble and find someone to take us for two months, which may not be possible. So I'll keep the committee updated on that. I'm assuming I will have more information tomorrow. I just got that information about an hour ago from... I heard about Maya through Representative Scarsdale, and I heard about GIC through Senator Cronin. So again, we're trying to work with the consultant that is representing NM at this point to see how we can move forward, if that makes sense. But that aside, if health insurance does not have an impact on our override, just would like to know what the committee's stance is as we're fast approaching the March budget adoption school committee meeting. And I do have a breakfast planned at the Council on Aging in Pepperell the first Friday in March. I'm trying to set one up in Townsend and Ashby as well. We have the budget website that is, should be in really good shape by the start of next week, as far as it being up and running. A lot of that is due to essentially Robin getting so much work done on that website and communicating with our PR representatives on the development of that budget. But again, just going back to what the committee's thoughts are on the override, and should we be proceeding with an override on that amount?
June?
Sure. Thanks for asking, first of all. I did speak very briefly with a couple of board members, and the amount that we're asking is hard to swallow for the town. So I think anything we can do to bring it down would be appreciated. I do feel like I gave a lot of pushback the last two years, and you know, just trying to hold the line because we wouldn't be able to ask for an override over and over, year after year. So I did kind of, you know, push back a bit the last couple of years, knowing that this year was coming, and that it was going to be a very, very difficult year. I don't know that we can avoid an override. Unfortunately, I feel like the cuts would be too much of a disservice to our students if we really bring it all the way down. Even last year, you know, I kind of wish we didn't have to cut the librarian positions and theater and things like that. I feel like we're getting into a dangerous area of it's going to impact the students if we cut a lot more. So I really want to be careful about that. I'm hoping that the insurance comes in favorable, and we have a good solution for that, because that would count for a lot. I mean, I feel like if we can get that number even in half, you know, to a, you know, a smaller increase, like a 1.5 or 1.6 instead of 3.3, that would make more sense to everybody. I think people could kind of meet in the middle a little bit more on that one. But again, I don't want to see it negatively impact our students, impacting class sizes, losing good teachers, things like that. But in the meantime, anything that we can trim, we really need to, because it's a pretty high number right now. But I've heard feedback both ways.
Sure.
Ready to, you know, to fight for an override, and other taxpayers in town that are like, we absolutely cannot do this. So it's definitely going to be pretty split. But anything we could do would be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica?
The word I've been getting is that no one, the people that I've talked to, they're not in favor of this at all, and just to begin with. So anything that I agree with June, anything that we can cut down kind of now, and hopefully get a lower rate, would definitely be the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Randy?
Just want to add is, no one wants an override. And anytime you ask anybody in any town at any point in time, "Do you want an override?", no one's going to be for it. Nobody is ever going to be for raising their taxes that they have to pay. But I think we need to lay out the case here on why this year we need an override. And part of that comes from, in Ashby and Pepperell, I believe the last time they had an override for the schools was in 2012. Townsend, last time they had an override, period, I believe, was in 2007. And with only being able to increase the revenue by 2.5%, with 40% of her budget rising less than 1% every single year, it is unsustainable. And we've been, you know, working, trying to work with the state, and there's a lot of pressure in the state to revamp the foundation budget, because it's just not working for a lot of the districts. In the Commonwealth, we haven't gotten there yet. There's some relief possibly coming in a few years. But where we are right now, I think we need to just try and make the case of we're not asking just to have money. This really kind of is something that we've been scrimping and trying to get by as best we possibly can, with as little of a raise as we possibly can. But we also don't want to continually hurt town services as well. Without, you know, with inflation and everything going up the way it did, 2.5% every year unfortunately just does not pay for everything that the towns and the schools need.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. David?
So yeah, I'm right there with you, Randy, in particular there. I have been trying to reach out to state and federal officials. Margaret Scarsdale is the only one who's made time for me so far. But one of the things that I've been reaching out to them about is with regards to our budget. We've seen inflation at, what, 8.5%? And that we are able to keep our budget the last few years at 2.5%. And even with the override that we're looking at, you know, it's incredibly tight. The message I've been trying to communicate to them, though, is that in the last eight years, year over year, the state has only increased their Chapter 70 funding to North Middlesex by $1.4 million compared to, over the same time, the three communities have increased their budget by $7 million. We had all of this stuff about how, you know, education funding was going to get, you know, a shot in the arm from cannabis tax, that it was going to get a shot in the arm from the millionaire's tax. And in the year 2021, we actually saw a decrease. And next year, we're projected to see a decrease, or for the fiscal year '25, we're expected to see a decrease. The communities themselves have been stepping up and and doing their part, and asking them for more and more each year. You know, it's the unfortunate position that we are in right now. We have been tightening our belt, I feel like, as much as we possibly can, while trying to avoid any, you know, strikes or any of the labor issues that we've seen around the Commonwealth. But with a 30% special education population, one person or one company providing an offer for our buses, and that going up 27%, national inflation of 8%, and our three communities going up $7 million compared to the state funding of $1.4 million for the last eight years, we need help from the state and from the federal government, not just North Middlesex, but as Superintendent Morgan has pointed out very deftly, you know, almost every other community in the Commonwealth, especially if they're regional, absolutely needs help with this funding. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I won't repeat what Randy and Dave said, but I agree with both of them. And I think you look at some of our other costs who are going up more than 2.5%. It's just, it is not a sustainable model, and I agree, the state needs to step up in a number of areas. You look at, I mean, just like electricity rates even have gone up more than 2.5%. I mean, that alone. So I think there's a story for us to tell that it's not that our budget is increasing, that we're asking for more. It's that we're still asking for the minimum, and there's costs within that that are out of our control, that are going up beyond what we're allowed to assess onto the taxpayers, and the state is not stepping in to do their part. So again, I agree, nobody wants an override. And I think as a committee in a community, we need to decide what level of education we want to be providing for the students of our community. And that's not an area I'm willing to compromise on. So I think we need to keep that in perspective as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on this? Was there anything else on the budget we needed to discuss?
Nancy, anything on your end?
The only thing I would add is, we still have some, you know, the state legislature hasn't ruled, you know, weighed in on the Chapter 70 formula or the transportation formula. So those things are still coming. In addition, we have some things that we don't know yet. We don't know exactly what our circuit breaker number is going to be for next year for special education tuitions. We don't know the rate of the tuitions for all the private schools. So there's things that could come in lower than we're estimating still. I guess that's just the hope. We should get some numbers in the next few weeks, and that will, we'll try to get a number down, you know, from where it is right now, so that, you know, the adoption on the March 14th, hopefully will be at a lower level than it is currently.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy. I don't know when we talk about kind of the, and I haven't, I don't know if the draft of the the PR version of the website's been sent around or not. But I think one of the important stories to tell, I mean, kind of like David alluded to, is around the state contributions and how that's not keeping up with inflation and increases in other areas, but also the difference between our budget and the assessment percentage that the towns see. I think that is often misunderstood, and people think we're increasing our budget by double digits because their town is assessed at 11% difference versus the budget's only going up, whatever it is, 6% or wherever we're at. So I think that's a very important story, that our budget is going up by what I would consider to be a reasonable amount. But when you take into account other revenue sources that may not be meeting their demands, population shifts and things like that, that gets translated differently to the towns, even though our budget's only going up a lesser percentage. So I think that's a very important narrative to explain, because I I don't even understand it most of the time, and this is my sixth year doing this. So I think a lot of townspeople don't get it either, and I think that's an important piece to explain.
Thank you.
All right, any last comments on the budget from anybody? All right. Seeing none, then we will move on to the district calendar, which I'm trying to share.
It should be in the packet.
I have it. I'm just, for some reason, this isn't working the way I want it to, but... All right. Superintendent, if you want to explain the difference as well, I pull this up or try to pull this up.
Sure. So if you look at the, if you look at the March conference dates, initially, we had had a meeting with the Teachers Association, and they had asked initially to move the conferences from Monday, Tuesday during that week of March to Thursday, Friday. And then came the realization that they'd be doing conferences on a Friday afternoon, Friday evening. So they've since asked to have it moved to Wednesday, Thursday. They just didn't, they felt having the conferences at the beginning of the week made for a very long week. Quite honestly, I don't blame them with having Monday and Tuesday both potentially be late evenings. So they've just asked to have the 14th move to the 12th. So the conferences would be Wednesday, Thursday, as opposed to Thursday, Friday. And that's the only change to the calendar.
All right, any questions or comments on that? If not, I will take a motion to approve the 2024-2025 school district calendar as amended.
So moved?
Second.
I think Randy beat you on that one, Jess. Any other questions or comments? All right, David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Everybody? But we, we have Superintendent of Schools next. What? Is this Lisa or Dave? Where's this? When we come back into open session?
I think we have to come back in open session.
All right. So we will table that for now. And the next one, the School District Teachers Association. Is this also, when we come back?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving on to subcommittee reports. Are there any of these subcommittees that have updates, etc., Accelerated Repair? Building Committee? Communications, nothing. Finance?
Just our meeting on Friday, or Thursday, sorry, on Thursday.
Negotiation personnel?
There'll be an update in executive session.
Okay. Policy, Randy?
Nothing at this time.
Any of the liaisons to Ashby, Pepperell, Townsend have any updates? All right. And that brings us to the lovely paragraph for executive session.
I will move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, director of special education. Purpose three, to discuss strategy in respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers, Teachers, Secretarial, Custodial, Educational Support Professionals, and Nurses Associations or Unit, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will reconvene in an open session.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think June beat you, but Jess, you were much more chipper.
Yes.
All right, this is to enter executive session. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the committee will, do I read this now? I always forget. Robin approached me. So in the executive session, I have to read it again? Okay. Then we want your executive session, the Google Meet, and we will be back to open session. All right, we're just missing Lisa Martin, I believe.
Craig, you have the motions. Nick sent, Nick emailed you a motion.
We got it. Yes, I do have that.
Okay.
Nick, I appreciate that. Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, I know a bunch of people have to leave, a couple of people have to leave in a minute or two. So I'm going to go ahead and continue.
Sorry, Craig. Lisa has her hand up and attendees.
There we go. Thank you.
Bye.
No, that's good. Thank you. And there she is. All right, so we're back in open session. We will start with the item on the agenda for the Director of Special Education. So I will take a motion that we vote to appoint Aaron Upton to the position of Director of Special Education subject to the negotiation of a mutually acceptable contracts.
I'm moved.
Second.
Lisa and Jess, any discussion? All right, seeing none. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. The next item going back up on our agenda, we have the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association MOA. Lisa or David, do you want to make that motion?
Sorry, I'm trying to find the right document.
I don't think I provided you with a a motion.
All right, Lisa, you want to go for that, then?
I'll make a motion. Let me get back to my screens. Make a motion to accept the teacher's contract for the 2025? Does it start, starts in '25, right?
Lisa, Craig just got the motion from Nick.
Oh, okay.
All right, so I'll take a, thank you. I will take a motion to vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee and North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association for duration of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027.
So moved?
Second.
Let Dave have it. It's okay. Dave can have it.
David?
Craig, you keep your words right out of my mouth.
Yeah. All right, any questions or comments on on that topic? All right, seeing none. David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Same, but thank you to everyone who worked on it.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin? Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is six yays and one abstention by June. All right, moving right along. The final item we have is the Superintendent of Schools. We have an update on contract discussions. Lisa or David?
Was everybody able to look at the contract and see the updates on Item 9 and Item 12? With the wording that you had asked in the last meeting to be put in?
Yes, I see that.
Any discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
I think we might be ready for a motion. I don't know if there's specific wording on this, and we should recap in open session what the updates are.
The market value adjustments that... The market value adjustments that does that sound right? Craig? With the penalty clause? Are those the updates you're looking for?
Yes, yeah, just because I think this is the first time we've been talking about this in open session. To talk through the the market adjustment, the change in the allowances, the penalty clause, and I think that was.
That was it, correct?
Bulk of it, yeah. I think important to note that the the net the net, I guess, result is the is the same from a dollar amount. It doesn't change our budget at all. It has no impact to that.
And that this is starting fall of 2024?
Correct.
Or not fall or?
Well, it starts, starts not the change, yeah, any, any, yeah, that the the salary as it is now doesn't change and then the
In the next year, June.
The new schedule takes effect July 1.
On July 1.
And that's a dollar amount, not a percentage in that contract. So we made that a little clearer. Any questions from anybody? All right, then. And hopefully I get this wording right. I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's employment contract as amended for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027? Is that appropriate, hopefully?
Okay, that's fine. I sent you a motion, but that's what you said is fine.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Okay, well, no one, no one made the motion, so I will.
Do you want to read the?
I'll read the, yeah. So I'll take a motion to vote to approve the employment agreement between the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools effective July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
So moved?
Lisa Martin, June. And thank you, Nick, again, for saving the day with the motions. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All right, David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy? Randy, you're muted if you said anything.
Sorry, I said yes.
All right. Sorry. And I will vote yes. So that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for the work on that. And that is it. And once anyone has anything unanticipated, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right, Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June? Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Thanks for the time, everybody. Have a good night. We'll see you soon.